Good morning, Daddy.
Good.
Good, how are you?
Okay.
I'll do that.
Yep. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Did you check to see who we have on the line?
Not yet.
We are live in so many ways.
Morning, who do we have on the line?
Yes, Commissioner Maripena.
Morning.
Morning. So, Sir Smith?
Morning.
Morning.
Alyssa Henry from the Planning Department.
Morning. Yeah, they'll be here in a minute.
Okay.
Mic towards him. Okay, I believe we have everybody. Good morning, I ask you to please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, as we close another year in the seasons of life, we ask you to continue to sustain each of us every day. We have witnessed many difficulties and challenges over this past year, but we know your love, grace, and hope is there for us. May you continue to heal the ones that are sick and restore them to health. We pray for strength going into the new year. You've heard our prayers over the year and comfort us. We know that every moment of time is in your hands. Help us and grant us the wisdom and guidance to learn from lost opportunities and mistakes and lead us forward in confidence. We thank you for the blessings you have provided our county. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor and glory to the heavens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, if you just joined?
This is Sheriff.
Morning Sheriff.
Take a morning, Commissioners, take a morning Director. I just had to commit to create a little envelope, just a little envelope, and thanks Colonel for working on it.
Got it. Okay, at this time?
I didn't say that to Commissioner Matt here, but you could brief other Commissioners and we'll get a chance if you would.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time we'll convene the Commissioners' public meeting and ask for the approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. I'll public comment on agenda items only at this time. Hearing none, we'll move on to bid openings.
Commissioners, we received no bids for bread products, so we'll re-bid schedule for the 5th of January 2021.
Okay, we'll move on to the reports information items.
Alright, Commissioners, just as an informational item, the bids for the purchase of golf carts for White Deer Golf Course has been extended from January 4th to January 11th to be able to receive additional bids, more competitive bids. Moving on to action items. Commissioners, we are asking that you set the following salary schedule for the Lycoming County elected officials, specifically the sheriff since he's out of cycle with the other elected officials. The salary schedule reads for 2022, $70,545.55 for 2023, $71,956.46 for 2024, $73,395.59 and for 2025, $74,863.50.
Okay, any discussion or questions regarding the salary set for the sheriff?
Matt, do you have a percentage of increase per year?
I don't have the exact percentage, but I believe the first year is like 1.98. The intent was to get the sheriff onboard equal with the other elected officials.
Other borough offices?
Yes.
It's, I don't mean to interrupt coming up, but it is 2% per year. This was what I calculated. Thank you.
And just to let the public know, we do this now because it obviously doesn't affect the current sheriff. Whoever decides to run for the position in 2021, this will be the salary in 2022. So we, under the state law, we keep a distance from the actual people who are in the office.
That's a good point, Commissioner. Okay, any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none can have a motion to accept the salary structure for the sheriff's position from 2022 through 2025.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so carried.
Action item 4.2, Commissioner is asking you to set the salary schedule for the, for Lycoming County elected officials, specifically tax collectors. The tax collectors would receive $3 per bill in 2022, $3 per bill in 2023, $3.25 per bill in 2024, and $3.25 per bill in 2025.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the tax collector schedule.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion or questions?
When, when was the last time that they received, we know, an increase? That may have been back in 2013?
Daddy's here.
Either four or eight years ago. I think four years ago we got a small increase.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Morning Daddy, I didn't see you either, I apologize. The podium was... I said the podium was, you were, you were sitting behind the podium, I didn't see it. Yes.
And would you like to add anything?
I would like to add that the elected tax collectors are proud to serve all of our residents and appreciate anything you can do to help us.
Thank you.
So, if I could just make a comment here. One of the challenges that we have is that, under state law, we have elected official tax collectors, and what we don't want to do is create a situation where the compensation to the collectors is so low that nobody is able to run for the office. Because then, then what we're doing is we're sort of undermining what the will of the state legislature is in terms of having tax collectors. Some people may think we should have them, some people may think we shouldn't, but that's a decision made by the state legislature, and there's a lot of argument to be made that they serve a very important purpose in a community in terms of getting taxes in. But I think part of our thinking, or at least my thinking, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, is that by having some reasonable increases, it allows them to keep up with the cost of inflation, and we don't, by, by our actions, we don't eliminate the position or cause the position to be eliminated. In the past, there are places where the tax collectors have just not run for office. So, you know, I suppose if we set, set the salary for a congressman at $10,000 a year, we either would get nobody running, or we might get people who are so independently wealthy that it doesn't matter. But we should do something that I think causes, creates a balance, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so carried. Thank you Daddy. Okay, action item 4.3, discuss and approve Director of Administration, so we're going to move that to the end and for possible discussion, and we'll move on to 4.4 right at this point.
Alright, good morning. My name is Alyssa Henry, I'm the Hazard Reduction Planner, I'm calling in for John Lovell. I'm looking for a vote on the designation of the agent resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Number 4408. This will allow for the acquisition and demolition of six homes in Lycoming County for flood mitigation.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Hearing none can have a motion.
I'll move to designate Mr. Lovell.
I'll second.
It is, did it?
It might be Maya Tinn.
I am so sorry, Maya Tinn, I see that now in the document. I move to designate Maya as the agent.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner seeking your approval on the agreement with Delta Development Group Incorporated to provide development and planning services for 2021.
Okay, any questions or discussion on this agreement? We had this on our agenda last week, and it was tabled for some questions for Commissioner Massar, and those questions were answered, I believe?
Yes, I'm not sure if we made a motion, but that's okay, we'll keep it open.
Yeah, we, we made a motion last year, we, last week, and we tabled it.
Okay. After Shannon got back with us with a couple of my questions, I am in favor of this. When we first, when I first came on board as Commissioner, we had retainers set up where we paid companies $150,000, $200,000, $400,000, $500,000 a year, and they didn't have to do any work. If we didn't ask them to do some work, they'd still get paid. And that has changed, and I'm glad to see that last year, I believe, the report was about $25,000 or something that, that they used.
Is Shannon here? Shannon?
I, I, I think it was around a $30,000 mark.
Okay.
But it was only turned on for the help with one of the levy projects for the RCAT grant.
And I, and I think that's important.
Yeah.
Because we, we have them to rely upon without that retainer.
Right.
And, and if we need them, then they'll start to charge us.
What we do is, if we need that help from their company, we call them, we ask them to give us a cost estimate, and then we discuss that with them about what actual work we want them to do, so that we know upfront what it's going to cost us, and then we run that through the process.
Shannon?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at Appendix Exhibit B of the contract, and it says Task One, Monthly Monitoring Federal Funding.
That's basically a placeholder?
The contract, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The contractor will monitor activity with federal agencies on a monthly basis to identify funding opportunities to advance the county's initiatives relative to transportation, water, and sewer. And then it, it says that they'll spend 200 hours on it, and it'll be $50,000. Is that, is that something they're going to start immediately?
No.
Or is that something that you say to them, hey, we want you to spend 10 hours looking for funding or something?
Right, that's exactly what it means. It's basically a placeholder for funds. So if, if we have a project coming up in the future and we need to find additional funding, for instance, we didn't get the H2O grant for the levy, so if we determine that we're going to ask them to look for funding, we'll call them and say, hey, we want you to do some research on funding that would be appropriate for this project. And then they would determine, okay, they'd do a research for that, for that type of funding. Or we would ask them to help with a grant application if we needed additional help, similar to what we asked them for the build grant, and they would give us a cost estimate for helping with that grant application. Those, those figures in the appendix are just placeholders.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agreement with Delta Development Group?
You guys already had the motion last time?
Yes. Can I have a vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so carried.
Okay, moving on to 4.6. Forrest Lehman, put on, seeking your approval on the amendment to agreement with David A. Smith Printing to extend the term until December 31st, 2021, for the municipal, for the 2021 municipal and primary election.
Good morning.
Morning Forrest.
This is an extension of an existing agreement we have in place with David Smith Printing. They provided print mail services for all of the counties' vote by mail ballots for the November election, did a very good job. This is a challenge we're looking at for the long term, though. This is not a, the, the volume of vote by mail that counties experience this year is not a phenomenon just to the presidential election year. It's a result of Act 77 and the expansion of vote by mail that, that it facilitated. So, we're looking at this as a long-term challenge that we need to, in effect, run a second election alongside the, the election we're used to seeing where people go vote in person. Having a company behind us to be able to print all of the ballots, the envelope, to get them into the mail, when you've got thousands of these that need to go out, having a company behind us is going to be the best, best way to go forward. We already know they did a great job for us in November and several other counties. They're also positioned really effectively for our mail delivery, because we all know, we all joke about it, that if you want to mail something across the street, it has to go down to Harrisburg first and then come back up, you know, and that's, we may not be happy about that, but that's the way the post office is now. This company is located in Harrisburg, so when they print the ballots, they get them, they get them into the envelopes and everything, they go directly into the Crooked Hill Mail Facility in Harrisburg, and that is effectively cutting out half the trip, because they're just taking a one-way trip from Harrisburg up here instead of going down and back. So for a variety of reasons, these, these folks have, did a good job for us in November, and I believe they'll do so for future elections.
And we were of a different company for the primary, we switched over to David Smith?
We did, yeah, and, and this is because it was, it was a brand-new market. There were actually many companies looking to get into this market, but, but, you know, elections are, are different from a lot of other printing challenges. There's a lot of pieces that have to come together, go into the envelope. Obviously, the stakes are high, you know, everything has to be correct. People have to get the correct party ballots in a primary, they got to get the right, you know, ballot for their township, their borough. So it's not like they're mass producing one thing over and over, you know, every voter has their own address, their own ballot, their, you know, all of that has to work. And, you know, some, some companies did really well at that, others, others ran into some challenges, and the counties, we've had two elections now since Act 77 where we were able to either see for ourselves how companies have done or be able to compare notes. And that's, and that's kind of where you saw a lot of, a lot of counties making some changes to their, to their vendors, or else, or else locking in a certain company like, like we are because we had a good experience.
Okay, Forrest, I want to thank you for your leadership. There was issues with that company in the primary in May, you identified them. We switched to a different provider that worked in, in the general election.
Yeah.
Which was great, so I want to compliment you for identifying it and addressing it so we can, we can make the change over to them. And I would encourage the taxpayers out there to contact your state legislators, because there's a lot of things with Act 77 that need to be cleaned up, and you brought some of those to the state legislators to work on, and encourage them not to, not to be complacent down in Harrisburg, but this needs to be worked on immediately so that we don't have an election week in the future.
Right.
We have an election day, and we're not an embarrassment to the nation.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, the counties have certainly represented to the, to the legislature what their needs are for elections going forward, you know, that there are some things that still need to be fixed with the election code, you know, obviously stemming a lot from Act 77. We hope we'll have some productive conversations and can get some of those changes made, and in the meantime, we'll, we'll keep learning whenever we can to try to make things work better. You know, one of those issues you, you touched on with, with counties changing companies, you know, I don't know that it, that it was necessarily the county, the company's fault as far as the problems we had in the primary. One of the things counties learned the, the hard way is if you have a company that's based further away, that geography can be destiny as far as mail delivery. So you can have a good company, but if the location is not conducive to getting that mail into, into the mail stream to get to where it needs to go, it's, it's never going to work well. And, and the, the post office, the mail service is something that counties are, we're still trying to wrap our heads around all these details about the different facilities and the paths that, you know, that a ballot might take, depending on where it goes into the mail, and these are things that, you know, if you'd asked me two years ago, that these are now things you're going to have to understand and make sense out of, you know, I wouldn't have believed you, and yet, here we are, you know, trying to make sense out of, out of the post office, and these are things now we have to think about all the time.
Stay there for a second, if you want to take the vote, I have a couple of questions to ask.
Yeah, I have another question for him too, so after you finish up. Can I have a motion to accept the agreement with David Smith Printing to extend the term through the 2021 year?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so carried. Okay.
Okay, so your job is tough enough, and Commissioner's responsibility is to make sure we oversee the election process and the integrity in it. So this morning on Fox News, there was a report that Pennsylvania had more ballots cast than registered voters, and my question to you is, since we're responsible for Lycoming County, that was not the case here, correct? We, we had, we had more registered voters than we had votes, at least from the data that I saw.
That, that's correct.
Okay. Now, is there a way, because I've gotten several phone calls this morning regarding this issue. Is there a way to dispel that rumor or to validate it by calling the Secretary of the Commonwealth to say, what is the numbers statewide?
Well, I, you know, I have heard some versions of this over the last few weeks. I can't say that what's being reported today is exactly the same, but, but I recall there being a story or two that, that went out on social media, and it did generate a few calls to our office about more ballots going out than voters across the state, and I remember the, the numbers, it was saying something like, you know, millions more ballots than there were voters, and what, what looked to be happening was they were pulling numbers from the primary. So in November, we had about 3 million people vote by mail, whereas in the primary, there were only about 1, 1.5, it was about half as many, and somehow, the numbers from the primary were getting transposed and, and applied to use as a statistic for November, and that was where the, the confusion came in, because there, and you've got to keep straight number of applications versus ballots. So you, you may send out a certain number of ballots, but you're never going to get 100% of them back. I think our return rate was about 80%, which was pretty good, because in the primary, it was in the, it was lower, it was in the 70s. Now, yeah, statewide, Department of State can, can run a report and say, you know, this is how many applications counties mailed out across the state, this is how many ballots came back across the state. I don't, I don't know those statewide tolls, but it's certainly something they could do.
Okay, yeah, and, and let me clarify, that there were more votes casted, okay? Than there were registered voters, by 300,000. That's what was reported today on national media, and I want the legislators, and I know that, and they're not listening.
Yeah.
But we have to understand something. The integrity of our election is the foundation of America. If we lose that, well, this will be chaotic. This is, will not be funny, it will not be nice to witness. So, the importance of certifying an election and letting those people out there, whether it's through social media or national media, report something that is absolutely false, okay? They should be punished if it is false. This is, this is very important. So, if you could get that information to us, and it should be simple, they certified it, how many people voted and how many people were registered to vote? And if that, and if that were the case, then we need to decertify as a whole.
I mean, I, I have access to, to numbers like that for our county, but I would not be able to get them for the whole state, it would have to come from the state.
Right, but that whole state better have the same numbers that each county has, and we should be able to validate that accusation.
Well, you know, this is one of the challenges counties have faced all year, is that every time there's a new, you know, idea, story, whatever you want to call it, it'll, it'll come out on social media, it'll be reported, you know, breathlessly by, by, by cable news or, or news or whatever, and counties have had to answer for every one of them. You know, we get, we just get hammered with one phone call after another about, and you know that something is out there on Facebook or wherever because you've gotten 10 calls about it that day, and you're having to combat every one of these like, like whack-a-mole, you know, to, to try to combat it, you know, and the next day, there's something new. You know, I, I have, you know, no, I, I do not believe for a second that in, in this county, we had, you know, more ballots come back than we had applications, or that we have registered voters. have registered voters. We had very high turnout, but we have records out of the voter registration system and our, our voting system to show that that's not, not the case, you know, that, that it went over 100%.
And, and I agree 100%. It didn't happen here.
Yeah.
But when it comes to the state, if you could get that information, just so that we can report back to the constituents.
Yeah.
That, no, that's false, or, oh, maybe we do have a problem.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to do that as soon as possible because it's out there.
Yeah.
And, and I, I would assume that it's a rumor, but I'm not, you know.
I, I can ask for that.
I have to do my job as a commissioner.
I can ask for that from the state. You know, one thing we do before every election is, not only are there election results out there, but we also post our registration numbers going into every election, you know. So I certify our registration totals to the state before every election. They were posted, I want to say about two weeks before the November election. So people knew down to their own township or borough, how many registered Ds, Rs, and third parties, other, going into November. And anybody who wanted to could have gone on our website and seen, well, how many did we have registered? How many votes did we have? And see that, you know, that the turnout was, I think it was 82% when we did the official results, which was astounding. But, but it wasn't 100%. It wasn't 101%.
Right. Okay, thank, thank you.
Yeah.
So the two questions I've been asked repeatedly is, there's a lot of controversy about the Dominion system.
Yeah.
And nationally. And can you let the constituents in our county know what system we used for Lakeview County?
Yeah, we've, we've actually had it on the Voter Services website ever since we purchased our, our equipment. We, we purchased equipment from Clear Ballot back in May of 2019 when all the counties were required by the Commonwealth to replace their voting equipment. So we purchased from Clear Ballot. We've had some information up there about the Clear Ballot system. Ever since then, we still, we still do. And so we don't use Dominion. That being said, and although I'm not an expert on Dominion, I, I think it's important for the public to understand that any voting system that's in use in the Commonwealth, and we have, I think, five or maybe six different systems in use in the different counties in the Commonwealth, they all have to be certified by, by the federal government, by the EAC, and then also at the state level before a county could purchase it and use it. And they all go through the same testing that takes months. It's, it's rigorous. There's a long report that's issued that explains not only how the equipment performed, but also the, the methodology that was used, the conditions under which a county can use it if there are any. And those are all publicly available, accessible reports. And on top of that, you know, every one of these voting systems that's in use in Pennsylvania, because of the statewide mandate that we all had to replace them, they all are based on paper ballots, you know. So, so the concern before all the counties replaced was, well, what do you do if there's a, there's a complaint or a potential issue with your voting equipment? There's no way to get back to the voter's intent. All you have is a direct recording electronic machine where the vote goes straight onto a memory card. How do you look at it? How do you know what the voter intended to do? Well, you know, whether it's Dominion, Clear Ballot, ESNS, any of these companies, they're all paper ballot-based systems now. So if there's a problem with that scanner, or someone even alleges that there's a problem with the scanner, you always have the paper ballot you can go back to to ascertain and verify what the voter intended to do. And, you know, counties in Pennsylvania have already done that. They're required by the election code to do a, count 2% of those ballots and, and verify that the machines counted them correctly the first time. And we've done that. And every county's done that.
So, I mean, here again, we need to improve, just like Commissioner Matt Skerritt said, the system as it currently is. When you hear, you know, I don't put anything by anybody anymore. I've seen so much, it's, it's incredible. But when you see a, a constituent who says, you know something? I don't like either of these candidates. I'm going to vote the down ticket and let those two blank. And then you hear that, well, as people are taking them out of the envelopes, they're blank. What prevents them from circling a person? Nothing, other than the law, okay? It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be like that. It should be, you are not choosing this candidate so that it's, it's counted that way. I mean, listen, it's a new day, and, and I've seen the division in this country so bad that we need to tighten up the ship.
Yeah.
And, and get it so that no one could accuse anybody of cheating. That's how tight we need to get it.
You know, you're, you're highlighting that it's, you know, we had this, this debate, you know, this policy sea change after 2016, where back then, it was all about the voting equipment, you know, the D, the DRE machines. And, and, you know, even back then, there were a few of us who were talking to the legislature about this, saying, yeah, we can change these, but it, it doesn't, doesn't solve the whole problem. It's not all about ones and zeros. It's about having people of integrity in the positions that matter and having policies in place because once you get past the machines, you've got situations like that. And our answer to that, and I think a lot of counties' answer to that has always been about chain of custody. You know, you never have a person by themselves with a ballot. Whether it's, you know, when the judge of elections brings the equipment and the ballots back at the end of the night, they always have to have a second person with them. If there's a jam in the scanner out at the polling place that they have to, you know, free a ballot out of there, they never open that bag by themselves, there has to be another poll worker with them. And here at the county, when, when the ballots are coming back in the mail and we are pre-canvassing them on Election Day, that's the process where you are making sure that they're, that, you know, they appear on the voter list, you're opening the envelope. When you're doing that, it's never one person doing that. There's always two people per precinct, first of all, for, for accuracy, because you can double-check the work, but also for accountability. So there is not ever one person with those ballots on their own. Because that's the moment when it matters, when the ballot comes out of the envelope. And they're not out of that envelope very long before they go through the, through the scanner and they're counted. And then, you know, those two people put those ballots away and move on to the next set.
So I have one, one other question.
Yeah.
This is really frequently asked in myself, is when the ballots are counted and they're certified, how they report it to Harrisburg? Is electronically? And is there any way that can be hacked? And is it followed up on to make sure the numbers are accurate, that the numbers you send down are the numbers that are actually being reported?
Yeah, it's, there's a mix of, of different methods that play out starting on Election Night, but then also going through to the official results. And, and theoretically, yes. I mean, anything you send over email or that you post on a website, you know, I, I wouldn't call it hacking. I mean, we've had cases where someone could deface a municipality's website or, or a, you know, government website and put something on there. But they're not changing the election results that we have on our voting equipment, which is never connected to the internet. When we post results on the county's website or we send stuff to the state, those are just reports or emails that we have pulled off of an air-gapped system and moved it on to the county network. So someone could, you know, that, that's no more, you could spray paint the wall, but it doesn't, you can clean the wall. You know, you can pull it, pull it down, put, put the results back up because we have the results safe, we know what they are. You know, but as far as how we get it to the state, yeah, we have data files that we upload to the state through the voter registration system on Election Night. Subsequent to that, we are certifying results for some of the contests when, when we have official results. We're certifying them on paper, you know, which, which we have you as the Board of Elections sign. Those are sealed and, and mailed to the state as hard copy. We are also entering the official results into the voter registration system, data entering those to be certified as well. So it happens both electronically and also as hard copy. And if there was ever a point where those numbers don't match each other, this, the state is going to come back and say, hey, you know, what's going on? And it's, and it's been a, a little more of that than usual this time because we've had this, this universe of ballots that is still active, an active matter before the U.S. Supreme Court. You know, the ballots that came in after Tuesday up until Friday at, at 5:00 PM. And so it's been a little more interesting than usual, having to separate those universes out and report those to the state separately. And then we've left it up to the state to do what they think is appropriate there because as long as it's active before the court, we haven't been reporting those in our official results because the court hasn't told us that we can.
Okay.
I'd just like to add to the public so that nobody misunderstands me. I do not believe, I believe them to be rumors, okay? I've witnessed what our voter registration and our department does. And I do not see how other counties could get away with doing certain things like that. But when constituents complain and ask questions and you see it on national media, it's our obligation and our duty to, to make sure and answer those questions.
It's really hard for the national media to report, I think, I, I think at least, it's hard for the national media to report on elections responsibly and then for people in my position to respond to it because election laws vary considerably from state to state, you know. And, and so something that happens in another state, I, it'd be impossible for me to know whether it's appropriate or not. And it also begs the question, you know, what do they, how in tune are they with the laws of this state versus that state to be able to know what's, what's normal, what's appropriate versus what is not? And then when you think about how that trickles down to the, the level of, you know, all of us on the street, when we're in school, we don't, we may get some civics education as to how our government works, you know, legislative, executive, judicial, separation of powers, checks and balances, all that stuff about how government works. But did we ever get anything in school about how elections work? How do you put these people in office? And it's because you can't come up with any kind of standardized curriculum for it. And so then, you know, knowing that that's the case, it's hard to blame some people when they, they don't understand it fully. And then that gives rise to the suspicion and, you know, the, the questions and, and the dissatisfaction that you often run into out there.
Thanks, Boris.
Yeah, thank you very much, Boris.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy New Year.
Great. Moving on to Action Item 4.7. Commissioners, I'm seeking your approval for the extension of the COVID-19 disaster declaration. This is a 90-day extension, following suit with what the state's done. It keeps us in line with additional resources as they become available.
Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution.
And I'll second that. And by extending the disaster declaration, we, we keep that door open for funding. If we did not, then we would be ineligible for funding, correct?
Correct. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So carried, and I look forward to the day that we don't have to extend this. I think we all do.
Concur.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to Action 4, Item 4.8. Commissioner, seeking your approval on the workers' compensation renewal proposal for 2021. I have $404,039, which is an increase of $29,332 from last year's premium, which was $374,707. Premium increase is due to the increase in our payroll and our experience modification.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
A second?
I, I will second that.
Okay. Question or discussions on this?
Do we have numbers as to the actual utilization of the, the, the actual claims paid out?
Yeah, we do. I don't have enough time ahead. This year, we're, we're much lower than last year.
Right.
And so unfortunately.
Good, Commissioner. Okay. Well, I was going to say, I think that, that it was $220,000 in, in claims in 2019. You're right, 2020 has been a better year than 2019, but they use a two-year lookback. So I think that's, that's the number you were looking for.
We had Commissioner Maribito, he, you had contacted the rep for the workman's comp. Do you want to report on that?
Well, I think the, the director reported it. I mean, it was, it was a combination of increased payroll, especially in what they call police. So they have, they have different classifications under the state. You know, you have your clerical, you have your county or public employees, you have your police officers, trying to think of another category. And, and so when we have increases in wages or increases in the number of hours that people work, it increases the payroll. And your, your insurance is based on that and what's called the modifica, the experience rating, which is what, what the director mentioned. So that, how many claims have you had? How many accidents have you had? How many incidents have you had? And that, there's usually a two-year lookback. They look at two years of claims as opposed to just one year. So next year, we should benefit from the fact that 2020 has been a good year.
And you're right with, obviously, the rates on our sheriffs and our, our RMS workers and our maintenance workers, where there's a risk of injury, much higher risk of injury than someone who has a desk job, there's going to be different rates.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I look back prior to switching to companies, and we used to get some nice returns when we had less utilization. I mean, as high as $300,000 return. Now, obviously, we were paying 500, 600,000 throughout the course of the year. But I think we have to keep an eye on this because where does the difference go?
Right.
You know, I'd rather see it come back to the county, even if we have to put out more money during the course of the year to get a better refund or discount at the end. So let's keep our eyes on this for next year and see, see if this number goes down if we maintain our current utilization rate, okay?
And one good thing that county does, we have a safety committee made up of different employees, different officials within the county, our directors on that. And Director, do you want to elaborate on the safety committee and how important that is? We've had it in place for about 20 years, and then the recommendations they give to the county.
Sure. In fact, we have direct input and participation from a member of this insurance company that sits on, or sits in on the, the safety committee meetings. And then the fact that we have met all the requirements to be recognized and certified at the state level, I think it enjoys, or allows us to enjoy a 5% savings on our overall premium. But it also gives us a way to better structure the, the safety committee and look for ways to improve safety, our safety posture throughout the county operations.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And just by having that. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I was going to say, for Commissioner Mazzare's point, one of the things that we can also do is put it out to bid after X number of years, you know, which is probably a good policy with a lot of our, our contracts and so forth. After three or four years, put it out for an RFP or, and see when we gather it, you know. Because I think that's how we ended up switching. We, we switched because we put it out to bid and we got a better rate. We got a better proposal from this company than the prior company. But your good point that we got to monitor it and see what happens when our utilization goes down.
And by having the committee in place, that stays as 5% on the premium, which is good. So regarding the workman's comp, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so carried. Thank you.
Moving on to 4.9. Commissioner, seeking your approval to add additional funding to the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank in the amount of fifteen thousand. And this will come from CARES funding that we, we still maintain.
Yes, back in the beginning of the pandemic, we had allocated ten thousand dollars to the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. And as we continued to see more and more need, we felt that we would revisit this and provide additional monies. We know there's a dire need for the basic necessities nationally and especially in our area, too. We've reported the American Rescue Workers, we have assisted, they were doing roughly seven-hundred-and-fifteen meals a month. Now they are doing a twelve-hundred per week. And Central PA Food Bank's just as busy. And it's vital that we get the assistance out to our peoples to just meet your basic needs of food. So this is one way we can help. I have a motion to accept petitional funding to the Central PA Food Bank.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried, thank you.
Commissioners, action item four point ten, seeking your approval for an amendment to Commissioner's resolution, allowing for the extension of the term of, of members of the Lycoming County Planning Commission pending final legal review of draft resolution by the county service. We, we're working on the draft, the solicitor's reviewing it right now. And this will allow us to extend a member of the planning commission beyond the two year or two terms that is currently understood to be the situation within the county. Set back several boards of commissioners.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Can I, can I be, well, go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve, but I have a question.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion or questions?
So, because I had some people, I had a constituent call me this morning saying he was submitting his application to be on the planning commission. One of the other planning commission members said to him, hey, there's an opening, you know, you would be good, you should submit your, your application. So what I'm wondering is, did the planning commission take a vote to do this? Or maybe they can't. I don't know whether the solicitor can give us an opinion on whether they can do that because my only concern is that we've got two tracks of things happening here. On the one hand, apparently, some people are being told, hey, there's openings on the planning commission. On another, we're saying that because of the pandemic and so forth, I assume that, I think that is one of the reasons we, we wanted to do this. So my question is, what, you know, what's been the official position by the, by the planning commission? Did they take a position? Do we know whether they took, did they make a request to us in writing or what? Hey, Mr. Smith, maybe you can enlighten us on whether and what, you know? I just don't, what I don't want us to do is end up voting today to keep the same people and now I've got constituents saying, hey, because I just got a text from this constituent saying, hey, I submitted my application.
So Commissioner, Commissioners, this is, this is the solicitor, but this issue arose maybe a week or ago and the Lycoming County Planning Commission bylaws do not have term limits in their provisions. So in reviewing how the term limit idea came up, we found out late yesterday that a past board of commissioners, I take one that may have consisted of Commissioner Burke, among others, put a, put by resolution, a two-term limit on the membership of the board of the planning commission. The rationale, at least as we understood it, and it's historical from former Director Houseman, was that that was a concession to certain municipal members, municipal users of the planning commission. And I don't know the backstory much more than that, but that was, that was one of the motives for the amendment, for the resolution. So the planning commission themselves, by their bylaws, had no restrictions on term limits. The commissioners, by resolution, historically, apparently imposed that limit years ago and this is seeking to waiver that. As to whether the planning commission has a position on this, I really don't know.
So if I understand this correctly, we're not changing the two-term limit that the prior board of commissioners put on because there may actually have been a good reason for doing that, especially now when you tell me that some municipal entities were concerned about not having some turnover. We're not changing that. What we are simply saying is for the year 2021, if someone's going to be termed off, we're going to allow them to stay for 2021. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
That's, that's my understanding, and I think it's only, it's only one member.
Okay. So for the public's understanding, sometimes when people have a lot of experience on these boards, you know, you want to try to keep them because they can obviously make a contribution. On the other hand, you also don't want a situation to develop where your whole board turns over in one, in one year because then you can wind up with a lot of folks who don't have any experience. I think doing this is not going to create that situation, but will allow us to keep someone with, with a fair amount of experience. I don't know if my other two colleagues want to weigh in on whether that's correct or?
That's correct, in my view.
Okay.
The, there is one position that we, we will approve to extend his term one more year.
One more year, correct.
There are two other positions.
Does the document actually list his name? I'm trying to find the docu, the resolution here on the document sent to us. It's on the agenda, I think, Commissioner.
Right, it's a reappointment.
But the draft resolution, we don't actually have the draft resolution in front of us.
No, no, sir, we haven't gotten to that yet. We'll have to.
Okay.
It's on the agenda, Commissioner.
No, I see it on the agenda, but I don't see anyone's name. Whose name are we talking about?
The reappointment, Carl Nolan, for one year.
Oh, I see.
For one year.
One more, two, yes.
His name's underneath it.
I was reading four point, I was reading four point ten.
Now you have to turn the page.
Yep, I see it. Okay, okay, coronal appointment term, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So there would actually be three positions open. One is, has, there would have been. I know there are two. There would have been three positions. We have one resignation and there would have been two others that would have been term limited off. Yes. So Carl and Mr. Kaiser served their terms according to the, well, not even the bylaws, it wasn't put in there, obviously. And then we had one other commission member that is resigning. So that would have left three vacancies in, in that.
Chan is not aware of that, heard one.
Right, okay. Did, did we receive?
I had not received the letter. So therefore, I do not want to make an appointment until we receive something or anything from him.
That's why I'm getting into this.
Correct.
So there's possibly two additional appointments, okay? One is being filled.
Okay.
We know, we know that for certain.
We interviewed him, the three commissioners, and his name's on the agenda.
Yes, okay.
The other one, we won't take any action on. And Commissioner, Mayor Vito, that could be the person that you said is maybe interested, could be an applicant for that seat if that person does send us a letter of resignation.
Right, maybe that's why that person on the zoning, the planning commission said something to him.
Correct, possibly, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why you're seeing two, one reappointment today and, and a new person today.
Today.
There could be a third, but we cannot take action on that until we actually receive the letter of resignation and then we'll take action.
Correct.
And coming.
We, we happen sending out feelers for people who might be interested in serving, too. And if we get any, we'll, we'll pour them to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I received one as well today. It may have been the same person, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, just for clarification.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, four eleven.
Yeah, just a quick question. We have some comments based on the voter services and the agreement discussion.
Is it from the public?
Yeah, from the public.
Can we take care of that at the end?
Yes, under public comment.
Yeah, I was just wondering when you would like to.
Yeah, because it should have been initially public comment on agenda items only, but they may not have been available on the call.
Right.
So we'll take it at public comment at the very end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to four point eleven.
Excuse me, Forrest, can you stick around for that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner, seeking your approval on the following appointments, reappointments to the following Lycoming County boards. In the Lycoming County Agricultural Land Preservation Board, reappointments for terms ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, Marilyn Eli and Larry Fry.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept those two reappointments?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion or questions on either reappointment?
No, other than the fact that we appreciate their service and continued service.
Absolutely.
Good of that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, four point eleven, point two.
On the Lycoming County Planning Commission, reappointment for term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, Carl Nolan.
Okay, let's take that separately.
Yep.
Okay. Can I have a motion to reappoint Carl Nolan to the planning commission for?
That, that, that term ends at twenty twenty-one, that's the one-year appointment. Yeah, I'll move to appoint him.
It's an extension of one year.
Yep.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any questions or discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried, okay, next.
And for the appointment of the term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Jason Bogle.
Okay, that's a new appointment.
Correct.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to appoint him.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or discussion on Mr. Bogle?
I, I can only say this, this gentleman is very eager, very happy that we're going to be making this appointment. I believe that he will be a contributor and he'll be good for this commission. He has a lot of good qualifications and I hope he proves me, right?
Yeah, a lot of enthusiasm on the phone when we spoke to him. Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Commissioner? Commissioner Maribito?
Yeah, I'm here, my phone was muted.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, aye.
Okay. Aye, so carried.
All right, and on the Lycoming County Zoning Hearing Board, reappointments for terms ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, William J. Klein and Romuald, Ramald, Ontrocka. Did I get that right?
Close.
Regarding those two reappointments, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I will second the motion.
Questions or, or discussion on either reappointment?
If we mispronounced a name and you know how to pronounce it, okay? Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, this time we'll go back to action item four point three, discuss and approve Director of Administration's salary. Can I have a motion for discussion?
I, I will move, I will move to approve.
Can I have a second?
So wait, what are we approving? When you say we have motion to approve, what are we?
We're going to discuss possible approval of the Director of Administration's salary.
At, at what?
That's the discussion.
That's, that's the discussion we're going to have.
Oh, you want to just open for discussion?
Bring him up to the floor.
Yeah, we're going to bring him up to the.
Okay, I'll second the motion for discussion. I thought he said approval, I didn't know what he was.
Nope. Okay, so we're at the discussion approval. Okay, Commissioner Maribito, do you have any comments?
Well, the only comment I have is that I don't, there's no proposal here. He's an employee, right? So employees under our current policy get, if they have a positive evaluation, get two and a half percent. And if they, the cost, that's composed of both a cost of living and, and help me out here, the COLA this year was, was it one or one and a half?
One and a half.
One and a half, yes.
Right, so the COLA is one and a half and the merit is one, right? And this is what we have in our policy and this is what we did with all of our full-time employees, five hundred and thirty of them. So I would assume that the proposal is to say, to do the same thing. And so I, but I don't know, I don't, this is kind of like a little vague on the agenda here. I mean, in other words, there's, he, he's in pay grade fifteen, he's an employee, he's no longer a contract worker. He ended that at the end of last year and without aligning on whether he should have, because I don't want to get to a personnel issue, whether or not what he has, I think he would be subject to the same policy that all five hundred and thirty full-time employees are subject to. So I'm a little bit of a moss here when you say, what do you say, when we, when the agenda says to, to pass and approve Director of Administration's salary.
Okay. I'll make a couple of comments.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to just give a little history of how we chose the Director of Administration six years ago today, well, come January. We put out, I, I believe we, we, as the commissioners, decided to get a, a group of people to search for a candidate, which they did. We had several applicants, several from outside of Pennsylvania, a couple locals. And obviously, we, we have to try to, to pay people what we feel that we can afford at the time and look at their qualifications. And back then, as I recall, we had one person who was a very good candidate, a very good person, but again, he, he was more HR person. Was he capable of possibly doing it? Maybe, I don't know, I, I didn't look favorable upon that. We also had an internal applicant who, who was, I feel, very qualified, but was not asked to, to apply. But nonetheless, he was there and, and we could have used him. And then we had several from outside and when we were talking about pay, they kind of like declined because for the position, it was way too low. And Matt also applied and we had negotiated a contract with Matt, a five-year contract for one hundred thousand dollars. He was not looked at as a, an employee. uh, for one hundred thousand dollars. He was not looked at as a, an employee. He did not get pay raises as an employee. Um, and a matter of fact, this is his sixth year and last year I was, I was unaware that his pay or his position was as an employee of this county because there was no resolution to do otherwise. I just assumed, which I assumed wrong, um, that we granted a contract extension until the commissioners worked out more details. So I found out that he's an employee of the county. And, um, my colleague, well, my colleagues, but more specifically, my, my colleague of Italian descent, we had a really good conversation yesterday regarding, uh, you know, this position. And one of his arguments was, why, why do you want me to act so hastily now? It's the twenty-eighth of December. And so therefore, again, like I said last year, I'm very disappointed in the commissioners for our lack of urgency to evaluate Matt McDermott, who is the Director of Administration's Performance. And the commissioners should have acted, we should have, we should have had the Director's Performance Evaluation completed by the, the first week after Thanksgiving. And so now I agree with my colleague that, um, it is sudden, but beginning of the year starts in a couple days, okay? Uh, we, we must, we must do this in a timely manner so nobody feels like we're making a hasty decision. Now, I will state that prior to hiring Matt, um, that, that group of people we had searching, did some research on to what that pay scale would be, uh, from a statewide and national perspective. And that ranged anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five thousand to as high as one hundred and seventy-five. And we just didn't feel like we could afford that and, and, uh, we didn't want to be in that position at the time. Now, when Matt came to us, he had an extraordinary resume and, uh, one of management, one of managing thousands of people. Um, I was impressed. The board, that board was impressed. And, and we asked, we asked Matt, I believe at the time, Matt may have been making a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that, you know, you have no county experience, county government experience, um, but you do have a tremendous resume. And we asked him if he would come on board for a hundred thousand dollars and see if, see how he performed over the years. So now comes the evaluation and the, and the value of the position of Director of Administration of the county. You know, I firmly believe that the Director of Administration's position is the most, is the most important administrative position in the county. The experience and the knowledge of county government in that position is paramount to the continuity of operation in county government during a transition period of new boards of commissioners every four years. We can lose three commissioners and have no experience. That's the state statute. And can you imagine the frenzy that would happen with department heads? And I'm not bashing them. I'm just being realistic. Of three new commissioners without having a good, strong Director of Administration. It would be chaotic, to say the least. Matt is responsible for overseeing a twenty twenty-one budget of over one hundred and twenty million dollars. I'm going to, I'm going to let, give you an example of what a hundred and twenty million dollars does for the, the citizens of Lycoming County. Pays for all county employees. They're around five hundred and thirty-five full-time and maybe fifty to sixty part-time. I'm not sure that, that number fluctuates. Provides benefits to around three hundred retired employees of the county. That hundred and twenty million dollars funds our five justices, our district magistrates, the district's attorney's office, defense attorneys, sheriffs, prison, pre-release, nine-one-one centers, the pathanetary, register recorders, the treasurer's office. It funds the IT department, maintenance departments, adult and juvenile probation departments, and all other departments within county government, and, and there are many. Matt, the director, negotiates all of our union contracts and presents, uh, the commissioners' insurance and private vendor contracts. Now, he doesn't do this all by himself, but he is responsible for the oversight and reporting every detail to the commissioners. Then he oversees for the commissioners many high-dollar projects. Matt and attends and reports back to the commissioners county-driven projects such as the seven million dollar radio tower project that's currently being implemented. That's a lot of, that's a lot of money and that's just one small project. Uh, I won't call that small. But we've had many million-dollar contracts and proposals, um, that he has overseen and brought us what we need to know. That project in itself helped improve and is going to help improve the communications of law enforcement agencies throughout our county. This is a big deal. Um, not only will it be updated in state of the art, there are many places where repeaters were necessary because of communication problems. They could not communicate in certain areas of their, their jurisdiction. And how dangerous is that for our local law enforcement? So it's a big project to me. Uh, he also is involved in many municipal projects, um, that include the levy, which is a massive project and that will take a decade to complete, if not more, uh, to be, uh, compliance with federal regulations. He has to be the go-between, between, um, our department heads. It's not always easy. It's not always peaches and roses. Uh, there is a tremendous amount of responsibility in this position. And I truly appreciate him taking the job with, with his resume the way it was. And I look forward to compensating him fairly. I mean, I, we could not ever compete with the national or even state, uh, but to compensate him for his efforts fairly. And that's all I, that's all I'm asking, to compensate him for his efforts fairly. So if you were to look at the Director of Administration with no qualifications as a contract that lasted five years and be extended or terminated, um, over the, uh, over those five years and now the sixth, he has done an extraordinary job for us. Um, every project, every department head, whether it's our planning department with Shannon or the city, you know, um, you know, council or mayor or the sheriff's department for voter registration, Matt has done an extraordinary job in understanding the subject matter and then reporting it back. Have we had our fair share of arguments? And, you know, yes, that's what we're supposed to do. Uh, we are the stewards of the county taxpayers' money. And I can assure you that many of the projects that Matt, you know, he goes to these seminars or C cap and he brings back to the county commissioners have earned in revenue millions of dollars or saved in expenses, millions of dollars. That's the value that this position has for the taxpayers of, of Lycoming County. So my, my proposal yesterday, and, and I know, you know, it caught my colleagues off guard, but, um, we have, we have a tremendous, um, personnel here. Our, our department heads are just as extraordinary in the positions that they do and, and what they achieve. Um, we, some may need more compensations, other may need less. But the, the fact that this is a, a single position that plays a major role in county government, um, and knowing now that he has turned into an employee and we can get into more details as far as the, uh, the range, uh, I proposed yesterday that, that we increase his salary to a hundred and twenty, somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. He's currently making a hundred and four. Um, so he made four thousand more in, in three years. And, and I know to the constituents out there that, you know, uh, this seems like a lot of money to you. It is a lot of money to us. But the, the value and the dollars that he's brought in and, and, and saved, um, and the management skills that he has is well worth that. Um, yesterday, I thought we came to a conclusion that, uh, we would look at him as, uh, or bring him up to anywhere as a hundred and thirteen to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I, I, I agreed to that, even though I still thought the compensation was low. I don't want this guy, uh, right now to be leaving. Not that he had said he was going to, okay? That's not the point. Um, and I would, uh, and I would make a motion to, to compensate him at that, that range. I'd make a motion to compensate, uh, Matt McDermott at a, uh, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar salary.
Okay, so I came into the picture much later. I've been here one year, as you all know. And I knew Matt from working with the county for thirty-two years. He had some interaction with our office, uh, more so with, uh, with Ed than myself, but, uh, I knew he was very well respected amongst the county employees and the county leaders.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't mean to interrupt you. Is there a second on the motion? Because we have, we have a motion on the floor, but we don't have a second.
Well, I'll make a second and then I'll go through discussion.
Okay, so we're in discussion. Thank you.
Discussion, thank you.
You know, may, Mr. Slizer, can, may I withdraw that, uh, that motion?
Which motion, Commissioner?
The, the second motion. I, I apologize. Uh, this was, the, the first motion was about discussion of salary.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I would like to withdraw my, my first motion. I mean, my second motion, the second motion.
So you're still under discussion?
Yeah, just to keep it under discussion.
Just so you know, uh, procedurally, Commissioner, your motion, uh, having been seconded is, is available for discussion. It doesn't mean that, you know, either the, the one who moved it or the one who seconded it has to approve it. So however you want to do it, Commissioner.
Okay. We'll just continue.
Maybe what makes more sense is for me to withdraw the motion about discussion and just have this motion, which is the action. This is kind of what I was asking about earlier.
Any, any salary would have to go to salary.
And leave that and then have our discussion.
Your discussion would go.
What do you think? It might make more sense?
I, I think it, I might be clear to, uh, withdraw the original discussion motion and accept Commissioner Mesar's motion to approve a specific number seconded by Commissioner Metzger that's then on the table for further discussion.
Well, it's also going to have to go.
I'll withdraw my motion on discussion.
It's, it's also going to have to go through salary board because it's a salary.
I, I'm not sure about that, Krista, that it has to go through salary board because he's still within the range, the pay range?
Yeah, he's still within the pay grade fifteen. So it won't have to be. You're correct. That's correct because it is, it's.
Can I go?
Yeah.
You may.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanted, and he's, he would be still way below that salary range.
I was saying, in case you needed me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for standing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What did she say?
She, she's leaving because of staying within the salary range.
Oh, okay. So she thinks it doesn't need to go to salary board?
Correct. Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor to raise Mr. McDermott to a hundred and fifteen, is seconded by you. Got it? Okay, we're in discussion. My motion's withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, when I came in this year, um, I agree with a, a lot of what Commissioner Mesar has pointed out. I look at, uh, the director as the CEO of county government. And we're a board of commissioners. He's the CEO. He reports to the board. And, uh, a lot of the things that Commissioner Mesar stated, uh, he reports those directly to us for us to make sound and educated decisions. Uh, what I find about our director is not only, um, does he bring his management skills, uh, to the county, he also brings a level of expertise that, um, that's beyond comprehension. And what I mean by that is when he dives into a project or within to a department, he learns everything about that project. He learns everything about that department to assist us in making sound decisions. Um, he has been a tremendous, like Commissioner said, all three of us can be replaced in an election cycle. To not have that person in that place of that kind of quality would be a huge detriment to the county, um, because they'd be starting from behind the eight ball instead of actually in front of it. Uh, when I came in, he, he, um, several things I wasn't knowledgeable on county government. He's assisted me. I've watched him over this past year, um, assist and help educate new row officers. He's met with them on a regular basis to help them in the adjustment of being into their new office. Um, he's on the phone regularly with other department heads that are seeking guidance on, on contracts and issues, uh, all kinds of, of issues. And, uh, his office is next to me, so I hear, I hear going on on a regular basis. This is not a twenty-four-seven job. This is a job that's around the clock. He was working on Christmas with the flooding issues. He's constantly contacting me in nights and weekends about things that pop up with county government. And, uh, how do you think we should go about doing this? What do you think we should do? Uh, let's reach out to the air commissioners. And, uh, we do so. So, um, he's in charge of the budget. He's in charge of the employees overall, the retired, twenty-six departments, the contracts, negotiations, all those fall within his, his, uh, realm of responsibility. And as we pointed out, the evaluation process yesterday, I went down, I went down through about ten different objectives of, uh, what he does within the county. He not only does it, but he does it professionally. He never, ever changes his demeanor. He doesn't get mad. He doesn't get angry. He's, he, he's from, he's been in combat. And when you're in combat, you have to keep a level health, a level head to survive, to stay alive. He brings the same thing to government. He's, he's the level head that are in, is, that is in the meetings. Sometimes get very testy. And, uh, he's always looking at the, the goal, the long-term planning. How can we save the county money? How can we do government more effective and more efficient, which is, is basically absent in state and federal government? It's just not there. He brings that to our county. So over the past year, he's been an enormous asset. Through the pandemic, um, he was here every day. He was here until ten o'clock at night some nights. I left, I would leave at eight. He'd call me. He was still here till ten, working on objectives, directives, so that county government can continue to function through the pandemic. so that county government can continue to function through the pandemic. So in October, I started to look at other counties because I felt that his salary wasn't in the same level as other directors throughout the state. Just for my own satisfaction, I wanted to see what it was. It was important, I felt, that he be compensated the way the other directors throughout the state are. Because this, this position is in every department. He's not just over one department, he's not over one part of county government, he's over everything, everything. He's the face of county government. Not only with the employees, but with, with the community, with the organizations that he works with. So as I researched that and I started contacting other fourth and fifth counties, I saw that he was in the lower end of what those fourth and fifth counties was receiving. One of the counties I, I contacted hadn't even been here as long as the director. That person had been there, I believe, three years, and they were being paid a hundred and twenty-one thousand, doing the same type of duties. So I reached out to the air commissioners, said we have to get Matt's evaluation done. Because his contract ended last year, and it ended abruptly, it ended abruptly. And it wa, it wasn't a good way it ended. And he went into this year and transitioned, not knowing what was gonna happen. And with me coming in, I said to the other two commissioners, what do you want to do with, with the director? And he's gonna stay on. Well, there's no contract. Well, we'll talk about a contract down the line or we'll see how it plays out. With the pandemic, it just, it just went. He never said a word, never said a word about what's going on. He was being paid as a fifteen, which fell into his category. And when the contract ended, it was a hundred and four thousand, six hundred dollars. And he was being paid that same salary. He received one raise back in the, back in the beginning of the contract, he hadn't received anything since then. So it just went on, he never said a word about his salary. And so at the end of the year, I said, we have to get Matt's evaluation done. One commissioner was out for, for a few weeks, and, and it just got put off. And finally, I said, we cannot go into next year, we have to get this done, please get your evaluation done. Said this in the beginning of December, said it again two weeks ago. And then the commissioners, the other two commissioners completed the evaluation process and got with me yesterday. And I said, we need to address this by the end of the year. It can't go into next year with, with our director in limbo. Technically, I guess he is an employee because his contract ended, he stayed here, but nothing was ever finalized. His, his negotiated salary in the contract was the same, his vacation stayed the same. But when the contract ended, his vacation changed. His vacation went back to what he would have been in the year five or six as a county employee, so it was less vacation. And to his credit, and I don't, if he wants me to repeat this, but I'm gonna go to anyway. We have a Newark county employee whose mother was terminally ill in another state. And he didn't have enough vacation to go visit her. Matt donated a, a week of his vacation out of his bank to that employee so he could go visit his mother and be with her in her final moments. That's the type of employee that we have in our director. He cares about the county, he cares about his employees. And I think it's, it's proper that he has incredible respect and the communication level of all the department heads that if he would choose to leave, I, he hasn't said anything about leaving, like the commissioner said. But I think it's important that we, we address this at this time. Now, I've been on both commissioners, and they both agree that next year, going into next year, we're gonna, we're gonna finally tackle the pay scale, which has been a huge problem in county government over the past several years, well, decade. And that's gonna be addressed in the EIP study. And that's gonna address other county employees, other departments, whether they're fairly compensated, whether they're overcompensated, whether they're undercompensated. But the EIP phase will, will address that. And I think that, that's important to address the other departments. But this is separate, this is a separate issue, I feel, I feel. I think this has to do with our director. He's in a, he's in a status by himself, there's no other fifteens in the county. And I think it's very important, being the CEO of the county, he has to be compensated according to the other ones in the state on the same type of level. And for his responsibilities for what he does here, he's been incredible. And again, he's been a huge asset to me. I, I don't know where we'd be without, without him and our, our new director of public safety through this pandemic if we didn't have both of them. So that's, that's my stance at, on this at this time.
Can I add one more thing, Commissioner Mayor Beal, before you start? That, that during that negotiation when he accepted the hundred thousand dollars, we did have to make a couple concessions. We did pay for his move from Maryland and, yeah, Virginia, I'm sorry. There was vacation time and allowing him to earn his second master's degree. And, you know, I'm not sure exactly, I, I know it had to do with catastrophes and things like that.
Emergency and disaster management.
Emergency and disaster management, of, of which we happen to see a lot of that around this area. So that was another one of his qualifications.
Certainly come in handy through this pandemic.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner. Sorry to interrupt you.
Commissioner Mayor Beal.
Oh, that's okay. So I, I, I just wanna, I wanna clear up a couple of things because there was a, there was a reference made to an Italian friend who I assume the commissioner of Mizzair is referring to me. This is the way that.
Commissioner, I'm German, so I think it would be you.
I, I know, so I, I deduce that by process of elimination, I'm pretty sure. So, so, you know, I had actually been the commissioner in the past four years who had organized and taken responsibility for making sure that we had reviews done. I collected them, I collated the information and so forth. And the chairman said that he was, and I did that in conjunction with the other two commissioners. I'm not trying to say I did something that they didn't do. We all, we all evaluated and made evaluations under the contract. So we, Commissioner Metzger gave us the evaluation form, which actually I, I wasn't thrilled with, but it's the one, we had been using a, a different one, gave us the evaluation form for managers. And yesterday at twelve o'clock, I had done my homework, I had done my evaluation. And I had reached a conclusion, and my conclusion was that it was a positive evaluation, he was entitled to two and a half percent, which is what we have told five hundred and twenty-nine full-time employees. So my colleague said to me, one colleague said he thinks he should get a hundred and twenty-two thousand, the other colleague said he should get a hundred and fifteen. And I said, well, you know, I can understand, and we were having discussions similar to this today as to whether or not the person was deserving of it, et cetera, et cetera. I said, look, let me make some talk to HR because this is the first time. No one had said to me before twelve o'clock noon yesterday that they were going beyond the two and a half percent. So in my mind, as someone who follows policies that we have in county government, for a pay grade, whether you're in a pay grade eight or a pay grade fifteen, there's a policy that the county runs with. And it's what we had told every full-time employee, many full-time employees who were department heads, who had come to us asking for additional money. And we had said, look, we can't in fact, so, so that was the first I had learned. So I was a little surprised, but I could understand, and I think I may have made the comment, I can see why you think he might, might be worthy of that. So I went and I did my homework for the next three hours because, again, I had not been informed prior to twelve o'clock that people were planning to give a twenty or fifteen thousand dollar raise, ten, basically ten to fifteen percent increase. So I began to look at it and think about it, and I said, here's the problem. So, so Mr. McDermott was a ten ninety-nine contract employee prior, and it ended on twelve thirty-one, twenty nineteen. We had discussions about it at the meeting. He, he, he rolled over to an employee of the county. He rolled over by virtue of the fact that he continues to work for us legally. His contract had expired, he became an employee of the county. And what I understood was that we treated him with the same respect that we did any other county employee. He was in pay grade fifteen. His vacation time became, it's, it's done, I guess, in segments of one to five years, six to, or one, I'm not sure exactly. Is HR there, by the way? It says.
No, they're not.
Okay. So he slotted in there to get the vacation that every other employee would get. Our, our HR policy, our policy on evaluations is that if you have a positive evaluation, you get two and a half percent. If you have a negative evaluation, you get the cost of living only, which is one and a half percent. And if you're one of fifty-two high-ranking employees who happen to have been there a long time and you have a positive evaluation, you only get one and a half percent, you don't get the merit increase. Okay? So we have fifty-two people who kind of feel a little bit shortchanged because they've been with the county for twenty-five years. They make very important contributions to the county, and we deny them the one percent increase. And it's been a source of continuous conversation among those fifty-two employees, many of whom are department heads, many of whom have tremendous responsibility from a financial perspective and from a public safety perspective. And in fact, earlier this year, I recommended that we take that cap off for next year. That we give the one percent to those people, the cost to do it is gonna be thirty thousand dollars, I think. And correct me if I'm wrong. And I was, I was told this three weeks ago at the, at the HR meeting, well, we couldn't do that, this was by the other two commissioners, because it's not in the budget. Well, as far as I can tell, what's in the budget for Mr. McDermott is a two and a half percent raise, not a ten percent raise. So that is one red flag for me. And this has nothing to do with Mr. McDermott as a person. And I think that it's important, notwithstanding comments that have been made about things that he did, which are wonderful, giving the vacation time, it has to do with running an organization of five hundred and thirty full-time employees and a hundred or so part-time employees, and the implications of what we do throughout the organization. So all employees have been given raises according to this policy. Legally, it is true, the commissioners can give out anything they want as long as there's no allegation of discrimination. Okay? We could give the Department of Public Safety a raise. Taking that approach to running an organization is not, in my opinion, good for the morale of the people in the organization, and it's not good for the morale of taxpayers. So from a policy perspective, I feel that taking the decision that my colleagues have recommended is gonna have negative consequences. I absolutely believe it's gonna lead to a deterioration of employee morale. I think it's gonna develop, people are gonna develop negative feelings towards the employer, which is the county. I think that people are gonna develop an attitude that special perks are put out for specials, for certain individuals. We could be, we could be open to a allegation of discrimination if there is a person in a protected class who alleges that they were not, but I don't want to go out on a limb and, and, and make us, you know, make us that as a definite. But it certainly is not helpful to just deviate from our policy in its sort of a, a way that doesn't make sense. And it's also, you know, as I said, it was contrarian to how we do business because it's sending a mixed message to employees and taxpayers. We have talked about the fact that we are financially stressed. We've talked about the fact that we're concerned about budgets. As a result of that, many people in the organization who have approached us about raising their department, we've said to them, let us look at it in a study that is done through the EIP or through other, other mechanisms. So I, I think that when I weigh that against the situation, I come up saying to myself that it's not good. Now, I came back at three o'clock, I texted the two of you, said I, I have some concerns that we're going down a path that may not be good. I expressed my concerns. Unfortunately, my colleague, Mr. Mizzair, took that and turned it into me wishy-washing. I had not, as far as I'm concerned, a decision isn't made until we cast a vote at the public meeting. I had not casted a vote at the public meeting, I had expressed an opinion. There was no effort on my part to delay or somehow put it stop. The only thing I was, was telling my colleagues was that I'm not prepared to go against everything that I think that we're trying to do as an organization in this special case. And I hope that my colleagues haven't taken it as somehow, I mean, there was an illusion that I tried to put the brakes on them. I put the brakes on anything, a two-to-one vote becomes lost in Pennsylvania. So the fact that I may or may not vote with it doesn't mean that it's putting the brakes on it, but I certainly am, am not gonna be silent as to what I think is gonna be the negative consequences. The reason I, I say that it, it raises issues for our taxpayers and our employees is because we've been preaching fiscal austerity. And now we're prepared to jump from a two and a half to a ten to fifteen percent increase. And it's, it's the range of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. So I, I think that it would also be very hard for me, and this is what I told the two of you yesterday, it would be very hard for me to look people in the eye who I asked to be patient, meaning employees and department heads, who have come to me and said, hey, you know, I've come to all three of us and said, hey, you know, I really think I'm underpaid. It would be hard for me to look them in the eye and say that I've been honest and I've been straightforward in my asking them to be patient. So it's just not something that I, I feel that is a good thing as a leader of the county. I also think that it's gonna hurt the position of the director. Because imagine that you're the leader and you have a certain amount of food left and there's a certain number of days left. And you tell everybody, you know, we can only have this much food per person per day, and you end up eating more of the share of the food. I don't think that that's the kind of atmosphere that gives people a, a good feeling. I'm also concerned that it's gonna affect our labor negotiations. We have contracts coming up with APO, JPO, and others. And notwithstanding our arguments, it's one thing to stand in negotiations and say, nobody in this county has gotten more than two and a half percent. And it's another thing for people to be able to say to you in negotiations, hey, you know, you found money to do this, you found money to do that, and, and it's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna send a mixed message in our labor.
I have to argue, I have to argue that, that statement, Commissioner, because there were people that got more than two and a half percent. So just, just to set the record straight.
You mean when we did a department reorganization?
Well, not, not just, not just then, when, when, you know, I could also argue, Matt came in as an unqualified director of administration, knowing nothing about county government. Okay? And that's why we got him for the price that he got. Now that he'd become a, an employee of the county without a contract, a contract extension, which I thought he had, he is now fully qualified. And within, within our policy, and we have done this many times this year alone, when somebody becomes fully qualified in their position, they get a ten percent pay increase.
But, but I think you're mixing apples and oranges.
Well, well, well.
He was not qualified to do the job, shame on the commissioners who hired him for a hundred thousand dollars a year. Why would anyone in their right mind pay someone a hundred thousand dollars a year if they're not qualified to do the job?
Because he had, he had, he, I explained that, Commissioner. He had tremendous abilities to manage.
I get that, and my point is, he probably was qualified. That's my point. My point is that you wouldn't have hired him if he wasn't qualified.
He, he had to learn a lot.
Somehow we, the idea that somehow we got him on the cheap, I think, is a felicitous argument. Because first of all, the salary range at the time was somewhere between, I think, seventy-five and a hundred and twenty or something.
It was seventy-eight, Commissioner.
What's that?
It was seventy-eight on up.
Seventy-eight to what, pay grade fifteen, seventy-eight to?
Well, back then, I'm not sure what the max was. Now, the, the max is, is, is a hundred and twenty-one.
Right. But my point is, he came right in the middle of the, he came right in the middle, but it was a contract. It was not a, it was not a, as an employee, and he also, you know, that's a contract negotiated between two parties. In this case, the, the, the employee, Mr. McDermott, and the county. And, and each side negotiated what they thought was necessary to keep him satisfied, and there's nothing wrong with that. He was paid for three weeks to finish his masters, he had a salary of a hundred thousand. They gave him ten thousand in moving expenses, they negotiated three weeks vacation for him, they, they gave him three weeks as opposed to just saying. So, so my point is that, but, but here's, here's the point of the contract. Under the. Under the contract, whether or not he got increases was subject to the contract. He was not, you know, under the contract, it said that it was at the will of the commissioners. And quite frankly, if he didn't get increases in a particular year of the contract, it was by a majority decision of the board of commissioners. Didn't have to be a majority, but it happened to be a majority. And so he is at a position now of being a hundred and four thousand five hundred and sixty-five. And I think that, you know, he deserves two-and-a-half percent. And I think that for us to go off and do something that doesn't seem to be consistent with what we've been preaching or what we've been doing with five hundred and twenty-nine other people.
One second, Commissioner, please. I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
But during the course of this election, and prior to Commissioner Metzger being on board as a county commissioner, we asked our department heads and elected officials to propose to us ways of reorganizing, ways of restructuring that can save the county taxpayers money, and a significant amount of money, or we wouldn't be up for it. And I can give you, time after time after time, from the Patonis' office to the DA's office, okay, and even RMS, that we've taken those numbers, saw the savings, and changed, reorganized. I mean, with the DA and the attorney, Martin, we know how many hours that man was working. We know the time. We've seen him come in over the holidays, over the weekends. The value for the dollar, I mean, it was minimum wage when you look at it.
His raise was about twenty-five grand, I believe.
Yeah, and his was much more than ten percent. But you do things to benefit not only the performance of the department, but also to save money for the taxpayers. And we've done that time and time and time again. I agree with you, you know, a study should be done, but Matt is, in my opinion, and we're doing this because we wanna do this before the end of the year. Matt, in my opinion, has proved his value, not only has proved his value, but has become, in my opinion, fully qualified as a Director of Administration that not only manages our staff to the best of his ability and one that we feel satisfied with, but also puts in a tremendous amount of more time. There were other options that we could use, moving him from a thirty-seven and a half hour position like we've done with other departments, okay, to a forty-hour position. And I know Matt works more than forty hours, okay, but he gets paid thirty-seven and a half. And that would have compensated him much more than what we're asking right now. I mean, there are other solutions to stay within the confines of our policy. His position, we were told yesterday, does not fall under that. Now, you may wanna make that argument, but it's at the discretion, he's at the discretion of the commissioners. And regardless of whether he's a contracted employee, or a contracted vendor, or an employee, he still serves at the discretion of the commissioners.
Right. I don't understand, Commissioner. You said you were told yesterday, position does not fall under that. Fall under what?
HR has stated that the position was at the discretion, we could pay the position what we chose to pay it.
And if we went beyond the ranges, then it would be a salary board, it would be a salary board issue.
Well, that is absolutely not correct. He is an employee of the county.
He is now.
He is in pay grade fifteen. We can pay anybody in the county anything we want as long as we don't discriminate. We can decide that there's a custodian who should be in pay grade nine or ten instead of pay grade eight. The idea that somehow that you're doing this because we have the ability, we have the ability to do anything we want as long as we don't discriminate. He's in a pay grade like every other employee. He's subject to personnel policies like every other employee. And all I'm saying is, let's keep the facts correct. Every employee ultimately is subject to the will of the commissioners who's not working for a role officer. If the commissioners think that an employee is not doing their job, the commissioners have the authority to terminate them. They'll go through certain channels. They will ask the department head. They will do evaluations. But this is, and we're not talking about terminating someone here. We're talking about whether or not we keep to our policy of all employees getting two-and-a-half percent raise, or we deviate in midstream. And it has nothing to do with Matt as a person or Matt's ability, et cetera. And as I said, I gave him a positive review. It has to do with whether or not we're gonna run the organization according to the policies that we put in place. And if we don't, we're gonna have to find a way to answer for that, whether we want to or not. And we can just say, well, people should be satisfied with what they make. But at the end of the day, people look at what we do. So I'm not, I don't wanna argue with you about it. I've tried to explain my position. You may have a different opinion. You're entitled to your opinion. And there's, you know, you're as entitled to believe your opinion is correct as I am mine. That's the great thing about this country. But, you know, it is, there are consequences to the actions we take, is all I'm trying to say.
Commissioner, you're correct about the policies, but I'm gonna bring out a couple of things. First of all, clarify some things. Matt was never a ten ninety-nine contractor. He was an employee with a contract. That's number one. Number two, regarding the fifty-two people that are at the one percent, I was one of those people when I was fifty-five. I didn't think it was fair at the time, but I continued to work here till I retired. And I made a note to both of you. I didn't think it was fair, and I'm the one who brought the conversation back in February, that we need to look at it. And it has to be part of the EIP study going forward next year. Now, you come in an agreement with it, but I'm the one who initially talked about it because it involved myself as one who was experiencing it. And I saw how it affected the morale of those department heads who had the level of expertise that ran departments. And if you have a mass exodus of all those persons, all those people at once, then you lose all that experience at once, which you agreed with. Now, yesterday, bring up the point of yesterday, we had this discussion. You were on the phone, and you were very quiet, as I was. And you listened to the Commissioner present. He said a hundred and twenty-one. He said I said about a hundred and fifteen. And where I got to a hundred and fifteen was the ten percent. And you listened to it. And you made a statement, I could live with the hundred and fifteen. I think that's a good wage. I think it's good, but it's how we get there. And you said, I think the forty-hour work week, which I brought up, that I went next door and spoke to Roxanne about, that she didn't think it was a good idea because it's opened up Pandora's box for a forty-hour work week with others. Now, let's go back. Prior to me coming in here, the last four years, because I was next door, I saw the morale that you talked about. I saw what happened with the morale and how it was down because random raises were being given out. I saw departments, if a department head wanted to come to commissioners, and there was no real reorganization, they would just bring, this is what we wanna get paid. It happened to RMS a couple of times. It happened to planning. It happened, and what happened, as you saw, I witnessed personally next door, I witnessed employees getting ticked off, and they formed unions, and they formed collective bargaining units. And that's what happened in my department. There was a squabble over override pay and overtime pay. They wanted to pay the same compensation working non-traditional hours as maintenance was. And it came up to about three thousand bucks a year. And the Board of Commissioners said, no. And they went out and got a collective bargaining unit. So it's about, you want morale issues, they've been going on for a long time. Now, they've improved. This past year, they've improved. But random raises were, excuse me, I'm speaking. Let me finish. Neil, I'll let you talk again. Random raises have been given out over the last five years. And that's the reason why you have more collective bargaining units and unions. It's a fact. Go talk to them. I sat in an office of one, and they wanted to know my opinion on it. And when they asked me, when I was an agent, back in two thousand eight, whether I wanted to join one, the vote was sixteen to fifteen, no. This time, when they asked, it was thirty-one to two, yes, because they saw what was going on during these meetings. And they got disgusted. And there are other ones that are going on throughout the county now. The thing is to try to limit those and try to, that's why I say we need to bring the pay scale as a whole into the picture, to have it looked at by another party, which would be the EIP people, and they could be the ones that tell us how to go about this fairly. This is a whole separate issue. This isn't a department. This is a person who's the CEO of the county, who came in on a contract, now does not have a contract, because you guys chose not to renew it last year. And he's sat quietly and did his job, and we all agree that he did a fantastic job this year. Now, yesterday, you said, I wanna go next door to explore the forty hours. Because if you, and you had the compensation figured out, the forty hours brought him up to this. And if it brought him up to this, then all it would be, would be a three-and-a-half percent difference. And you were in agreement with that. You said, I could, there's no problem with three-and-a-half percent if we can bring it up to this. You went next door, you had a discussion with Roxanne, and then you came back, and much to my surprise, you said there's a lot of issues with this. So I got you both on the phone. And that's when you guys had your discussion. I sat quietly and listened to you have your discussion. So yeah, the forty hours was entertained, as Commissioner Maser stated, because it was a suggestion by me, and then you wanted to go research it further. There's no doubt about it, this director works far more than forty hours a week. He works more closer to sixty to seventy per week. But he's a salary employee, so it's thirty-seven and a half. We talked about increasing it to forty, but there was issues. HR didn't think it was a good idea. It would open up Pandora's box. I disagree with that thinking because it's one employee, it's not a whole department. And we have several departments that work forty hours. And it's becoming part of a union contract, forty hours per week. It's becoming part of that negotiation process. It happened in the APO. So that's where we got, to where we've gotten. Yesterday, you were entertaining it until you wanted to go speak to Roxanne about the forty hours. And at that point, because you got further educated on it, which is fine, you should ask questions. You should draw your own conclusions. We're all elected to think independently, to come to a collective decision. That's what we're here for. But that's what transpired yesterday. Now, go ahead.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, you're right. Thanks for correcting it. He was an employee with a contract. I misspoke with the ten ninety-nine. You know, the fifty-two people with the one percent, I've heard that since I first came here in twenty sixteen. I've been hearing that from various of the fifty-two people that I, you know, probably most of them since I've heard. So, you know, I'm sure that it's something we've all heard. You know, the idea of, and ultimately what you end up having to do is, you have to weigh, is it worth it to take this employee and basically break with everything we've done to get him to a certain place? Or do you weigh, you know, the other problems? I mentioned the problems about the two-and-a-half percent, that policy. But the forty-hour work week, when you first talked about it and we thought about it, I hadn't yet spoken to HR and got from HR the complications of that, and that there will be many, many people who will ask us to change them to a forty-hour work week, and who will be able to probably justify that they should be paid. So for the public to understand, even though people are salaried, there's a certain rate they're paid at, and when you take them to a forty-hour, you're talking another two-and-a-half hours a week. It's, oh, fifty-two times two-and-a-half, it's a hundred and ten or so hours more that you're paying them. But with high-paid employees, it can add, it can add a lot of money. And so there was a feeling in the HR department that that was gonna open a lot of issues, and they highly advised against doing that. So that was, when we had the discussion earlier, I was not tuned in to the concerns of HR with that. I asked HR what their opinion was under the policy. They told me that they thought he should be getting two-and-a-half percent if he had a positive review. And, you know, in terms of the other place, like, when we did the DA, the DA is an elected official. We budget X amount of money for his office. The district attorney said to us, look, I can eliminate this, this, and this position. What I'd like you to do is raise the salary of one of my top lawyers because he's worth it, and if I lose him, I suffer gravely. And by the way, I'm gonna give you, commissioners, these expeditions to be eliminated. But what does that do for us? It eliminates the pension. It eliminates the healthcare. So when I, when we look at that, and it's the same thing with the personataries. The personatary came to us and said, look, we can do X, Y, Z, and save money. So I think those are different situations. And I just think that here we're deviating. In essence, Commissioner Metzger, we'd be giving out a random raise. We'd be doing exactly what you said had been the cause of morality. And it may be a random raise that some people think is justified and others think is not justified, but at the end of the day, it would be moving away from a policy. And it has nothing to do with whether I, you know, one's feelings about whether one thinks, there are lots of people who work for the county who I think probably should get paid more than they are. And by the way, I wanna put a little halt on this train on this study because I don't want people coming back saying, well, wait, Commissioner, Mayor Vito, you said you were gonna agree to a study. I need to see how much the study's gonna cost. I need to see how much the state's gonna pay, how much we're gonna pay, and I need to see what the implications of the study are. So I just wanna go on the record before I start being accused of backtracking, because I've put out an opinion that maybe a study would be good. I wanna know what the study costs the taxpayers before I just go and put a rubber stamp on it. So I just wanna put that out there.
Commissioner, you know how the EIP works?
We, no, no, no. We don't know, but we know what it's worked with that, with what we did with them. But we don't know what it's gonna, what it's gonna, we had no discussions with them yet about any, about a salary study. We haven't, you know, we haven't put any, we haven't done any things. We haven't also looked at what other competing issues there might be. I mean, if the state says, listen, you need new software in your X, Y, Z department, and we're willing to give you two hundred thousand dollars, it costs four hundred, we'll give you half of it. And they also say, hey, yeah, you can do your salary study, but guess what? You know, we're not gonna put any money towards it. I think we have to think about what we're gonna do. The point is that we haven't even looked at any proposals about salary study. And many of us think that it would be helpful yet. I just don't want the record because, because I don't want, I want the record to be clear.
Okay, so noted on the record for you.
Look, here's the other thing, and now I think I'm pretty, we're doing this in the context of a community which has almost double unemployment that it's had, in the context of a community where people have lost their jobs, where taxpayers are struggling, where businesses have gone out, and we're basically saying, okay, instead of getting a raise of three thousand dollars, we're gonna give you a raise of ten thousand. I think we have to be sensitive to what we do. And by the way, we're doing it with no rational basis to do it, other than that we think the person should have more money. That's my, you know, it's not exactly like we're in the economic times of the roaring twenties or the roaring nineties.
Commissioner, I'm gonna interrupt you. You know, I take offense to that. You, and you know something? This should have been discussed without being here. And then we gave our recommendations, and then we presented, and we take a vote. Okay? This can ruin morale. Okay? But you keep saying, time and time again, that this does not fall within our policies. This does not fall here. We're gonna do, you're wrong. And I can show you time after time after time where you are creating an illusion that this has never been done. This is a ten percent from a, well, now understand this, from qualified or unqualified to qualified. I, you know, forgive me. I have to interrupt you to say that we have done this. And you keep saying, no, we haven't. And so I think we need to And, uh, so I, I think we need to end the conversation. If we're going to vote on this, let, let's take a vote, and, um...
And let me just, let me just say, Mr. Metzger, when someone gets a promotion, there's a ten percent. When someone gets a reclassification, there's five percent. This is not a promotion, and it's not a reclassification. It is a raise that falls under the evaluation policy for giving raises. And do we have the legal authority to do it? Yes, we do. But it is not consistent with the policy, that's all. You can, you can say you don't want to discuss it publicly, and I don't know why.
I didn't, whoa, 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 I didn't say that. I did not say that.
I misunderstood you, I misunderstood you, because I, I, I think I said to you yesterday that this didn't fall under the policy. You said it was a promotion, and I said it's not a promotion. It's not a reorganization. It's not a reclassification. It is a merit increase given pursuant to a person's evaluation. And that policy says the maximum you get is two and a half percent.
Go ahead, let's go, because I, I looked at him as a contracted employee.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so carry two to one. Okay, Commissioner's comment this time, I'll be brief. Um, we're very excited that ShopBack is going to be reopened under a new owner. I think it's, uh, a great boost for going into next year. And we encourage people to apply, uh, for this manufacturer and employees that were laid off that have not found other employment, uh, to, uh, seek out and find out how to reapply to be rehired. And we're, we're very excited about that. Uh, also, the, um, we're considered, uh, because we still are very cautious, and, um, ask everybody to please take this virus serious. Um, do what you need to do to stay safe. Um, I noticed yesterday, there's been two spikes in the county. Williamsport being a nineteen percent spike, and Muncie being a forty-eight percent spike. So, we, we pray for the people, for the entire county, the people of our communities. We just ask that you please be safe, be cautious, do what the CDC recommends, and so we can get through this, and, uh, as safely and, quickly as possible. Uh, the vaccines are being rolled out, and, um, hopefully they'll be in our area very soon. And that the people that need the vaccine can get them, uh, the nursing homes, the first-line responders, the whole, the nursing, or the nurses, the doctors, should all come first, and then our elderly, um, need to have this vaccine as soon as possible, so. Uh, we continue to, uh, ask for you to be cautious and, and do your due diligence to, to make sure this virus doesn't spread. Those are the two things I had.
I just, uh, add that it's been a, a long year. Uh, from the elections to the COVID, to the restrictions, to you name it. And, um, for the most part, uh, I believe everybody, uh, from a county perspective, has done an extraordinary job. Not easy. Decisions that were made this year were not easy. We did not always agree on, on the, the final outcome. But nonetheless, we're here, we're still providing, uh, a good service. Lycoming County is strong. Um, we believe that, that the people are still there, willing to serve, and, um, I look forward to the twenty, twenty-one season, uh, or year. Uh, and I hope that, uh, you know, restrictions are lifted. And I pray for all of those who were affected. God bless you all.
Commissioner, do you have anything?
Yeah, you know, yeah, I think, I mentioned yesterday on the COVID call we had, that I think that as a county, we need to step up our game on, on the virus. Um, I, I'm a, I'm just flabbergasted how a small community like ours can wind up being nineteenth in the nation. Um, in terms of, uh, I'm, I'm trying to see exactly what the article said. I think you, you know what I'm talking about, the article from the,
New York Times.
Yeah, and the Sun Gazette, and I, I think that that should be a wake-up call to us, that maybe we've not done the best that we're capable of doing. I, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at the press conference that we should engage in some funding for testing. Uh, it's still difficult for people to get a test. Uh, you know, I, you need a doctor to, to get you a test, and yet, I see that the Department of Health is doing testing, uh, in other counties. Um, I, I think that when we come back, the first thing we should do is pass a resolution. Uh, you know, we do a lot of resolutions for their symbolic value, and, and as a way to wake up the public. I think that we should pass the resolution urging people to wear masks, not to engage in, in, in a lot of gatherings, uh, not to, uh, you know, to do all things. But I think also that we should take a, a vote and commit to funding some money for testing, uh, so that people can go and we can be proactive with asymptomatic testing, so that not just among our employees, but among people in the county. Because obviously, you know, some, I, I forget who told me that their coach for a team, uh, wound up positive, or there was a child on the team who was positive. You know, every time that someone thinks that they may have been exposed, we should be able to get a test. We have the money from the federal government. I think that we should, in the resolution, ask the Department of Health, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, to set up a testing site in Lycoming County, and, and explain to them that, you know, we don't have a public health department. We want them to come into the county. Um, I, I just, I know that we're all feeling a lot of pressure from this virus. And oftentimes, you know, yesterday, we got the report, there were a hundred and fifty-nine COVID deaths, and, you know, I had asked about how many there were a week ago, and I guess it, it went, there was, two weeks ago, there was twenty-five increase, and then twenty-three increase. Um, and the good news was that four weeks ago, I guess there was a thirty-five death increase in seven days. I say good only because twenty-five is less than that. But, um, I think that we can do some things as county commissioners that, uh, even though we don't have a Department of Health, that we can do that will help our community stay safer. And I think that, you know, we should put that, we should direct the, uh, the head of our Department of, of Public Safety to get a testing program in place, to get us, you know, a resolution on wearing masks. Um, and just try to be, you know, we can, we, obviously, we're all going to pray for folks. We also need to take some concrete actions, I think, that will help keep our community safer. Uh, it's been a great year working with you two, and I look forward to the next year. Um, and I think that we've just got to keep pushing on this virus, because, uh, we are going to get a surge after Christmas. I, I watch the news, and I see, you know, Logan Airport in Boston and these other places are filled with passengers. And, you know, some people are going to travel outside our county, and they're going to come back. Well, heck, we, we should, we should get them tested. When they come back from Christmas, New Year's, we should have the capacity to let them get tested, without having to get a doctor, uh, you know, doctor, just, anyone who's traveled outside the county, we should encourage them to get a test. They may be asymptomatic, but what we may find, we should certainly do it with our employees. But we should make it available to our, to the public, so that we find those asymptomatic people who've gone to other parts of the country, where obviously you can't restrict people from going, and we're not suggesting that. And you can't force someone to take a test. But what we can do is we can act collectively to encourage it. And I think if we give people the rational reasons for encouraging it, they'll get it done. You know, nobody wants to contribute to the spread of the virus. So, I hope that we can, maybe we can even try to put something in place, so that when they come back from New Year's, we can get that moving. But, uh, that's, that's my, that's my, uh, thoughts on the virus there. And I hope everyone has a good New Year, a happy holiday.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comment this time? Jerry, do we have anything? Matt?
Um, I have a couple comments that were from earlier.
Okay.
Um, and unfortunately, Mr. Green has left at twelve, or eleven fifty-six, but I'll read his comments regardless.
Yes.
Or, sorry. It's hard to tell.
Okay. Okay.
But the voter does not know what the machine recorded after casting a vote. The system needs a way to give feedback to the voter after inserting their paper vote into the machine. How are votes transmitted to the State Department? Or you want me to go one at a time?
Yeah, let's go one at a time. Go ahead. Forrest?
Oh, you want me to answer the first one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, we, we've taken a lot of calls from people wanting to, us to somehow verify to them how their ballot was counted, and, and we cannot do that. Uh, the reason for that is because the state constitution requires that every ballot cast must be anonymous. So there comes a point where the ballot goes through a scanner, or we, we open an envelope, take the ballots out, if it's a mail vote. They get mixed together. And so I can't go back and find a particular voter's ballot and be able to read it back to them. If, if there was a way to do that, that voting system would violate the state constitution. And if we found a way to do that, to make those folks happy, we would be getting completely different phone calls from people who believe their, their privacy of their ballot is being violated, because now I can go find how any person voted. So, you know, it, there, you're going to have people upset on either side of that, but right now, the state constitution is what it is, the law is what it is. The way voting systems have to work is what it is. And that means when someone calls and says, "I, I want you to verify how my ballot was counted," I simply can't do that. I can look at the ballots, you know, and we can audit how ballots were counted by this, by, uh, our equipment, you know, either out at the polls or centrally, and, you know, have a high degree of certainty that, yes, the equipment is counting ballots properly. If someone fills in these ovals, they're being counted that way. But I can't go back and give that assurance on an individual voter-by-voter basis. It's not possible. And if it was possible, it would enable other kinds of activities, like bribing someone to vote a certain way, or intimidating someone to vote a certain way. And then you could go check up later to make sure they did what you expected them to do. And I think we would all agree that that, that might not be a great outcome.
Okay, uh, next comment question from MC Green. How are the votes transmitted to the State Department? I cannot get an answer from them. I think you already addressed them.
Yeah, and I actually got an answer for your question, Tony, uh, because apparently this question has been coming up. CCAP was fielding it a couple of times this morning. And what has happened is, after the election, the counties start by, uh, submitting just county-wide official results, written down to Department of State as hard copy. That's how it starts. Eventually, that gets followed up by electronically data-entered precinct-by-precinct numbers to Department of State that are the official results. So you can imagine, for a larger county, if you're Philadelphia, that means you get over sixteen hundred numbers for all of their precincts, for how many votes did Joe Biden get in this first precinct? How many did Donald Trump get in, in that same precinct? Sixteen hundred times per candidate for all the statewide races. What has happened is, all the counties turned in their county-wide totals, official totals for those candidates to the state. Those are the numbers, uh, based on which the state certified the, the election results. Those are being followed up more slowly by the data-entered precinct-by-precinct numbers. There are some very large counties, including Allegheny, Philadelphia, Butler, I think it's Cambria. CCAP is telling me they have not yet data-entered their official precinct-by-precinct numbers. That's throwing off that number, and that's why, I guess, there were media reports saying that, oh, look, you know, more people voted than the state previously. You know, there, there's a, there's a discrepancy there, and it's because those counties have not entered their numbers electronically. They're behind. And I guess, you know, if they can't get the, if they couldn't get that answer from the state before they reported the story, that's, that's a shame, because the state should have been able to explain what was going on with the reporting, and why it was what it was.
All right. MC Green, again, if the final tally is submitted by computer, there continues to be an opportunity for fraud.
I think we talked about that.
Uh, this one's from Bill Fenderson. So this, "Make the county run better," I think not weighed on. You talk about all the crime that is going, and a way to try to put a stop to this. Uh, MC Green, uh, Mr. Lehman offered an opinion regarding the Georgia election to me when we discussed this topic. This is concerning.
I don't think I said the word Georgia, until right now, just for the record.
Uh, Bill Fenderson. Why don't you talk about the new jobs coming into the county as of right now, and how this is going to help the tax roll and money coming into the county?
Well, we, we have, uh, Digger and Associates coming into the county, and it's going to bring a hundred and fifty jobs to the county, potentially up to two hundred and twenty-five, but initially a hundred and fifty. Uh, they're good jobs, being paid in the mid-forties, and we look forward to, uh, people being employed at that, uh, at that business, so there's jobs there. We have people who are going to be hired back at ShopBack. Um, and, uh, so, you know, the, the news that we had, uh, two or three months, two or three months ago on the economic, um, is starting to go in the other direction. So, we've had two bits of good, two businesses with good news. And, uh, hopefully we'll have more in twenty twenty-one with, uh, you know, a possible another employer over at, uh, the property across from the landfill, if we can work that deal out, which would bring additional jobs. So, uh, we'll continue to work with the Chamber and work with businesses. I think it's very important that we, we work on the skilled labor force, uh, to able to, uh, you know, when you have a job there at the, uh, at the arena over here, and you saw as many jobs that were out there, open, and they couldn't fill the positions because they have skilled labors, that's a concern for the area. So, I think it's very important that we, we attract those skilled labors to the area, to fill those positions that are, that are open right now. And that's going to increase your tax base by bringing those people to the area. We have an opportunity now with, with, what's going on in the cities. Uh, we've talked to Chamber about it, attracting those professionals that want to get out of the cities with the high crime and with the restrictions, uh, with the high taxes, that are looking at relocating to, to attract a, a percentage of those professionals to our county to help fill those jobs and, and, uh, and create new jobs. So, we'll be working with the Chamber, uh, on that initiative too.
You know, Commissioner, that's one of my concerns about being on that top twenty list. That's not a great invitation for us in terms of getting people to come here. Um, and so that, on this COVID, that's why I think we've got to be really moving out to get us off that list.
Now, Commissioner, I, I, I hear your concerns, but, again, uh, the virus is everywhere. And it's bad here, but it's bad everywhere. And, uh, the, the main thing is getting these restrictions lifted, uh, so we can get back to having businesses open. So we have an economy, and then we can operate safely until everybody gets their vaccine, and we can operate safely and have those businesses here to track those people who want to get out of the cities because of their tax rates. Our businesses close, and people move out of the area, that's, that's more of a tax burden on, on the neighbor that's left here. Um, now they're going to be paying more taxes because that person had to move. Uh, like they're doing in California, they're fleeing California, going to Texas, and, uh, because of, of what's going on. So, it's important that, uh, that we attract those professionals into our area.
Uh, these aren't questions, they're just comments by MC Green. I agree that there are other topics that need to be addressed, but I wish to currently comment on the topic on which I commented at this time. Thank you for understanding. And MC Green, I have to leave this meeting now. Uh, please reply at a later time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that adjourns our meeting for, uh, today. Uh, wish everybody a Happy New Year, and a safe and healthy one, and we will turn back on January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you.